Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call to order today's Thursday, November 7th, meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a couple of quick announcements if folks have not heard. This is good news. Yesterday, we were notified by our congressional delegation that Missoula County was awarded, or will be awarded, $13 million, $13 million build grant by the U.S. Department of Transportation. This would be for some needed infrastructure on the west side of Missoula between the city boundaries and the airport, and bounded to the north by West Broadway and to the south by Mullin Road. So this is a huge deal and will accomplish a lot of long overdue infrastructure work in helping connect the road green system in that part of town. Also, a couple of weeks ago, and it's been a while since we've met as a body here, so a couple of weeks ago, we hosted a what we called the Southeast Montana Passenger Rail Summit in Billings, Montana. And this is to jumpstart the conversation about how to restore passenger rail service through Missoula County and through all of southern Montana and southwest Montana. And that went really well. We will host another similar summit for the west side of the state, likely here in Missoula sometime after the first of the year. So stay tuned for that. Any other public announcements? Okay. Is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? If it's on the agenda, you can talk about later. If it's not on the agenda, come on up, Lee Bridges.
Hi, I'm Lee Bridges with the East Missoula Volunteer, with the East Missoula Community Council.
Which is volunteer.
Which is volunteer. And this is something that's not on the agenda. This has to do with something that we brought up at our last community meeting, and I believe you were there, Dave, so you understand what this is. This is about some signs, some fire truck signs being requested. I've got a letter drawn up and signed by me with representing the community council. I also have the letter that the Fire, the East Missoula Fire Board drew up, and I'd like to present them both to you. I only brought a copy of, a single copy. I neglected to bring three copies, so can I just hand you this?
Yeah, just give them to Emmy here, that would be great.
Thank you, and I'm done until 6:00 F.
Okay, 6:00 F. And Lee, just to let you know, we will try to get this scheduled for discussion. My mic just came alive. We'll try to get this scheduled for discussion probably in one of our Public Works meetings or updates to the commission, and we will likely draft a letter to Montana Department of Transportation on this request. So, thank you.
Let me know and I will attend immediately.
Okay, we absolutely will. Couple housekeeping items. Folks, please silence your cell phones. It's a little distracting when those things go off during the meetings. If you did not do so already when you came in, please do so when you exit. Sign the, sign in form on the back table. This helps us know how to spell your names and also just helps us know who is here during the meeting. Spell your names, that is, if you testify, and don't spell it for us. Also, if anyone's wondering, I will read the claims list here in just a second, and if you're wondering what all the claims are that add up to the $11 million listed, you can go to our website, look at the electronic version of today's agenda, and you can drill down to the specific items. Finally, if you want to testify today, the way these public hearings work, I'll open the public hearing. We'll begin with a staff report. We'll then have an opportunity, if it's an item that has an applicant attached to it, the applicant or applicant's representative will have an opportunity to speak. We'll then open it up for public comment. You can speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you can be brief, brevity is always appreciated here. And then we will close the public hearing. The commissioners will have time for deliberation and discussion. We'll vote on the item and see where it takes us. Before we get to that, though, our current claims list, this is claims received by the commission's office between October 8th and October 29th of this year, total $11,307,147.75. We've got a number of public hearings today, interesting public hearings, and the first two will be opened with staff reports by Kylie Paul with our Community and Planning Services. The first public hearing, which I'll open, is a budget amendment for expenditure of 2006 open space bond funds for the Bluebird North Hills Open Space Project. Kylie.
Thank you. My name's Kylie Paul. I'm the Natural Resource Specialist in the Parks Trails Open Lands Program in Community Planning Services. So the, the Bluebird project is a city project, and so it'd be expending funds from the 2006 open space bond, so we're still in the '06 one. And this is a request for $450,000. At this point of the process that we're at, so you all had a joint public hearing with the city a few, a couple of months ago, and we're now at the point where we would need to get the approval resolution signed, if you're willing and able to do that, and as well approve a budget amendment to basically move this from one place to another to make it possible to expend those funds towards the city as they're going to be closing on this project quite soon. So it's a, it's a really neat project up by Grant Creek and the, up by Reserve Street, essentially, and it's 124 acres, and it will be open to the public for their recreation purposes and wildlife and scenic viewing purposes. And if we have any further questions as well, we've got Grant Carlson here with the city. He is the new open space manager for the city.
Okay, thank you. Could either you or Grant just talk to some of the specifics as far as the conservation easement and just how the monies will be spent, and just give us an overview for folks who have not heard anything about this today. What else can you tell us?
Certainly. So it's a property that Five Valleys Land Trust purchased a while back in, with the goal of then presenting it to the city for their ownership. And so this will be a property that the city owns, and so it's a fee acquisition, not just a conservation easement. And it's got a lot of critters and grassland species, and it's important elk habitat to keep open and available. It's, it's a big area where folks can see, if it were to get developed, it would be something that folks would, would see from everywhere, essentially. So it's got some scenic value for keeping that in open space. And so it meets the purposes of the 2006 open space bond by the specific, there's a list of the things that need to be included as serving a purpose of the open space bond, and these include, for this project, protecting wildlife habitat, providing open space and scenic landscape, managing for growth, providing recreational trails, and paying non-personnel related transaction costs. What else would we like to know?
And the total's $450,000.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, oh, and something really neat is it's very near, essentially adjacent to other open space that were, that was a part of the open space bond funds from the past, the wastewater treatment plant ownership there, there's a project right next to it. And so this will eventually, not quite yet, but be able to tie in public access into those lands. So that will be, it's not wastewater, sorry, it's the...
Allied Wast-
Yeah, Allied Waste, sorry. Waste, waste. It's, it's, it's the lands right next to the dump, essentially. Well, except it's more beautiful. You don't just look at the dump. It's a great place.
Okay. Okay, thanks for that qualification. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
I've been about this project, and it's, it's cool to have that open space access for the communities out on that west side of town, so that's...
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the Bluebird Open Space Project? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Further questions or a motion?
I motion to sign the approval resolution and approve the budget amendment.
I will second that. Yeah, I think this is a great project and will be a fantastic connection in the North Hills. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. On to the next. Similarly, this is budget amendment for expenditure of 2006 open space bond funds for the north shore Clark Fork River Trail connections.
Thank you, Kylie Paul, again. So this project is again a city project, and it is again with the 2006 open space bond funds. It's requesting $91,300. This one is a project that would protect, it's the purchase of a trail and riparian protection easement across a property. And it's on 1505 East Broadway, which is heading basically underway to East Missoula. There's a trail system that folks have been using, and this could have been developed because it's private property, and this helps maintain and secure that trail across time and for a longer period, so, and a longer stretch of locations, so that this keeps that trail safe for folks to be able to use. And additionally, it also secures a trail easement next to it, across the adjacent property there, so that, that will then additionally connect the non-motorized trail on that north shore of the Clark Fork River. And this is a small little parcel, but it's, it's again really important to keep available for folks to be able to move about in that area. And this project actually is one that you heard at, again, a joint public hearing. You did not vote on it, so this will request you at this point to additionally vote to approve it, as well as to sign the approval resolution and to sign that budget amendment as well.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, which I'll open. Is there any public comment on this proposed use of open space bond monies from 2006? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the commission?
No, I must admit, I thought we had already done this, I'm sorry, so I'm glad.
Sometimes we, it feels like the same item recurs again and again, so...
I will move to request the Board Act to approve expenditure of up to $91,300 for, of the city's portion of the open space bond funds.
And approve the budget amendment.
Oh, excuse me, yes, and approve the budget amendment.
Was there something else we were missing there, Kylie? Okay. I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And in keeping with our theme of budget amendments, the next public hearing that I will open is on budget amendments for 2019 to account for any overages or additional revenue, and this is also in keeping with our attempt to be more transparent in our budget amendment process. So we'll be doing these, I believe, going forward in this room during our public meetings. So we'll begin with a staff report by budget analyst Amanda Hentorn.
Thank you, Commissioners. This amendment is one that, and since comes every year, it's just to clean up any small overages in the budget over time. Sometimes we have a promotion, we end up a little bit over budget and personnel, so this cleans that up. There's amendments as well as transfers, so we're asking you to approve all of those.
Could you just describe, in generalities at least, what some of these might be?
Certainly. For some, in particular, there's one that's a bit larger for Fort Missoula Regional Park. In Montana, we have construction season in summer, and our fiscal year spans over the summer, so while we hope to perhaps get things wrapped up in a fiscal year, sometimes they span another, and we need to account for that. Additionally, if, as I mentioned, there's a promotion in a department and the wages go up slightly for that, there may be a small personnel overage that we have to cover. There's also, sometimes departments are rearranged or receive grant funding, like the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council this past year. We need to move some money for grants and things that they received.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I mean, I guess Amanda, this seems pretty par for the course. This is the first time I've ever seen one of these, so...
I understand. Yes, this is pretty standard. Most all of them were ones that I expected to see and are very normal, probably a few less this year than what we normally have.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. This is a public hearing also. Any public comment on the proposed budget amendments, amendments, which will just clean things up for fiscal year 2019? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional questions or a motion?
I move to request the Board approve the budget amendments for fiscal year 2019 to account for any overages or additional revenue received, not previously added to the budget.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we will continue a public hearing that we opened back on October 3rd. This was related to a request to approve a petition to alter the road right-of-way known as Six Mile Road, and we will pick up where we left off with a staff report from our county surveyor, Steve Nyde.
Commissioners, hi, Steve Nyde here. I love these short and sweet viewers' reports. The date of the viewing was October 22nd, 2019. In attendance was Dave Strohmeyer and myself, Steve Nyde. At approximately 12:30 PM, the attendees drove to the site of the subject road and investigated the proposed right-of-way alterations. We recommend approving the petition to alter the right-of-way as petitioned.
That is succinct and to the point. I like it. For folks who are not familiar with what's going on at Six Mile Road, could you just explain the rationale for this?
Yes. Couple of years ago, there was a pretty significant road failure, and in engineering a permanent fix for that, it's been fixed temporarily, but in acquiring an engineering design for a permanent fix, it became apparent that the right-of-way that was existing was not adequate.
Uh, we're just wondering if we could pull it up on the screen.
Or we could show it to folks.
Oh, okay.
Sam, could you help with the technology?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry. Okay.
I'll just, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So yeah, the engineering design dictated that we alter some existing right-of-way and expand it in certain areas and contract it in other areas, and this alteration will take those existing rights-of-way and move them to where they need to be to accommodate the new design. If you're familiar at all with the area, Sam, can you point to the tight curve there? Yes. That's, that's the area where the road slid away on the downhill side, and we need quite a bit more room there. That land is owned by MDT currently, and they are, they've been given the design and our proposed right-of-way alteration, and they're on board with that. And it actually affected only one private landowner on the uphill side, the Washburns, and they were actually the lead petitioners in this action.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Sam.
Any questions for Steve while he's up there? Okay. Any public comment on the petition?
I've done it.
Come on, come on up.
No, just back out.
No, come on up.
Ah!
You're not going to get off the hook so easily.
Bert Caldwell. All I want to do is see a wider scan of the, of the image so I know where it is. I'm lost.
Okay.
I don't get out to that part of town very often.
So take the Houston exit.
Okay.
And then drive kind of along the front edge of the interstate, and then you make the hard right corner to go up Six Mile.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you, Dave.
You bet. So Houston exit, then the next exit would be the Nine Mile exit, but, okay. Thanks for that clarification. Any public comment on this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any further questions or a motion from the commission?
I move that we approve the, the right-of-way, or the, I'm sorry, I move that we approve the petition to alter the right-of-way known as Six Mile Road, beginning at the northerly right-of-way of Interstate 90, ending at the north line of Section 26, Township 15 North, Range 22 West.
Thank you. I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next, we will continue a public hearing that we opened up way back on July 11th related to Pine Drive in Sealy Lake. This would be to establish a right-of-way on the north end of Pine Drive. And how do we want to handle this? Ms. Curtis, do you want to, from the Sealy Lake Sewer District, provide an update?
Sure. Jean Curtis from, representing the Sealy Lake Sewer District. So we're going for a record, apparently, of how many times you can delay a project. This should be simple, but it's not. This is a very complicated, just for folks that haven't been involved, it's a, and Sam could put this picture up, too. It's a section of what looks like a road that was part of a subdivision a long time ago in Sealy. Oftentimes subdivisions in those days, the lot, the road was actually as a lot. It was never, however, petitioned or conveyed to be a public right-of-way. It's been used by folks to access their property for many years. The folks who, the gentlemen who developed this property have passed away, and their families didn't even realize that they owned it until the Clerk and Recorder's Office did a great job of searching probate. So we still haven't come to, we have met, we are a little ways apart in our, our value of what we think the easement is worth, but we do now have, are going to meet with the, both sides' attorneys to discuss that. At this point in time, the Sealy Lake Sewer District Board has only authorized me to, to negotiate for the amended appraised value, and these folks believe it's worth more than that. The Board doesn't meet again until November 21st, so I guess I need to ask you to delay the, continue the hearing until your, the first week in December, whatever meeting that, date that is.
Do we have a date for that, Emmy, our first meeting in December?
Probably the, are Josh and I away at a Mako thing?
Well, we won't, we, let me assure you, we will not hold the public meeting if I'm the only one sitting up here, so. The first meeting where we have a quorum, let's put it that way.
December 5th, you should...
December 5th.
We should have a quorum.
Okay. We'll continue this until December 5th. Jean, is it even a possibility that both the district and the property owners could pick a mutually agreed upon appraiser, and whatever the appraisal that comes out of that would be what both parties could agree to, or something like that, to break the deadlock?
Yes, I, I was on the phone this morning with Mr. Beal, who is the attorney for the Sewer District, and he said that most times, in these types of cases, it's not as expensive because you, what you do is you have that second appraiser kind of reviewing the other appraisers' work, and so their attorney is out of town right now, so as soon as we set a date, I think that'll be something that's discussed, but I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone want to comment on the Pine Drive petition? Okay, we will continue this until the December 5th meeting. Thank you. And we might very well have set a record, or will set a record, on continuations with Pine Drive. So the next item that will come before us is a request that the Board consider and approve signing a resolution regulating overnight parking along Summers Street and Michigan Avenue, adjacent to, basically it would be Hellgate Storage in Sealy Lake. Oh, East Missoula, excuse me. Do you have any parking issues in Sealy Lake, Jean, that we can address? Okay. Excuse me. Sealy Lake on the mind, as always. East Missoula, excuse me. So I will let Jean talk about, Jean, jeez, Vicky talk about this in just a second. Does all of that get edited out of the transcript, or maybe that's verbatim? I'm, I'm, okay. Anyway, just by way of a little bit of background, and Vicky, feel free to hit on any gaps that I leave in the record on this, but there's been a longstanding challenge in, in East Missoula, adjacent to Hellgate Storage, with folks parking RVs, campers, essentially camping overnight in vehicles there. It's a, it's a convenient hiding place, if you will, because you have a commercial entity there on the block between Summers and Michigan, and folks at least feel like maybe they can be a little bit hidden from the public's view. Well, in actuality, they aren't that hidden. They might feel that way, but some of the activities that I'm sure we'll hear from members of the public that have gone on in those camping units have not been all that conducive to public safety and health alongside Summers and Michigan, and we've realized that this is kind of a unique situation, and we're very acutely aware of the possible unintended consequence of just moving a problem elsewhere, but this has been a problem that is very impactful to this neighborhood. Counties in Montana do not have the statutory authority to prohibit and regulate camping, but we do have the ability and authority to regulate parking. So one mechanism that is being proposed today, and that is part of this resolution, is to prohibit overnight parking along, it would essentially be the northwest edge of Michigan and the southwest edge of Summers, and I think that would have the intended result of eliminating folks camping along those sections of street. It's something that seems like a step in the right direction and will hopefully solve some of the longstanding problems we've seen in the neighborhood. Might this need to be revisited at some point in the future? Perhaps, but it's a tool that we have right now to solve a real and imminent problem in the neighborhood. Vicky, would you like to add anything?
Well, actually, you did a great job on the staff report. I'm Vicky Zire, Chief Administrative Officer for Missoula County. In front of the Board of County Commissioners is a proposed resolution which regulates overnight parking in Summers Street and Michigan Avenue adjacent to Summers Street Village. The vehicles parked on Summers Street and Michigan Avenue adjacent to the storage units have created a public nuisance, as Dave has said, to the local property owners. Children are using the right-of-way to access the local area schools and parks. The Board of County Commissioners are authorized to adopt regulations governing parking on county roads. Therefore, the county commissioners are proposing that overnight parking or parking is prohibited between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM along the southwestern side of Summers Street and the northwestern side of Michigan Avenue. The county Public Works Director, once this is adopted, would have the appropriate signs prepared and installed, and it would also authorize the Sheriff's Office to take action required to assure compliance with the parking regulations. And that ends my staff report.
Thank you, Vicky. So it's a public hearing, which I will open. Would folks like to come up and testify on this? And if you do, please make sure that the green light is on at the base of the microphone, which is... which it appears to be right now, and state your name for the record.
My name is, excuse me, I'm getting over this rotten cold, but happy to be here. First, congratulations on the grant for the community. The improvement of that part of our infrastructure represents a major contribution, so well done. Again, my name is Cameron Lawrence. My wife, Kristy, and I own Hellgate Canyon Storage, 730 Clyde Street. We'd like to first thank Dave for kind of helping us understand what the issue is. He's been out to our business, he's met with members of the community. Lee will perhaps talk more about that, but really seeking to understand the issue. So that is really nice when there's such a positive relationship with, with community leadership. In addition, Lee, who is basically the unofficial mayor of East Missoula, has been a great advocate for this as well. So the issue, which everyone is well aware of, had the opportunity to speak several times with the commissioners, relates to not just overnight parking, but what turns out to be long stay parking. So it's not uncommon to have people there for months at a time, and they're simply moving their vehicle, you know, slightly to, to stay out of the, you know, basically not violate the laws that's written. The solution of having no overnight parking accomplishes what our objective is, and that is to get these people to move other, other places. If you look at the design of our building, and we built that from the ground up, basically, the engineering specifically on the affected areas, we intentionally did not put heavy lighting in those areas out of respect to the neighbors. So in a sense, there's lighting back there, but it's, it's fairly modest, again, out of respect for the neighbors and the community. And they essentially use the structure as, as you see. They're able to park against the fence, they have privacy, it is not well lit in the areas they choose to park, and they basically live there. There are issues related to human waste, there are issues related to needles that are left behind, as well as other drug type paraphernalia. There's the simple abandonment of the vehicles at times. So a lot of dodgy behavior goes on there. And again, as I've expressed to the commissioners before, that is unacceptable in that, in what's happening. Last summer, and this has happened in previous years, and this has been obviously an ongoing problem, there was an instance in which on two separate occasions, once on Summers, once on Michigan, just this past summer alone, where meth house is written on trailers, and they just stay there and they park there. And while the conditions I described a moment ago are deeply troubling, that is just, that is, that is outrageous, that those kids growing up in the neighborhoods, riding their bikes, hardworking families raising their kids, the kids are being kids in the summer, riding down to the school, and they have to basically ride their bikes by trailers with meth house written on them. It is a bad situation, and again, we really appreciate you, Dave, seeking to understand the issue, being respectful for all concerned. We are fans of the Pavarello Center. My wife and I have made contributions and will continue to, but we are happy with this solution, and I do believe over time you have a full understanding of the problem, and we are happy with this remedy. And we appreciate the guidance we've received, not only from the commissioners, but also from the Sheriff's Department and their help with us over the years.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Yes, sir?
I'm Ben Olson. I'm one of the neighbors that he was talking about, live right across from that location. And it is really challenging with all these things that come up there, these campers are being parked there, they're not really being camped in even, a lot of them. And one of the things, every year now, for I don't know, it's been five or however many years, five plus years, every year it gets worse and worse and worse. This last year, early, and they usually come early in the summer, and they start coming in. This year, I sat there and I was working on my place, and I watched one individual bring in two motorhomes and a camper in one day. And on that same day, two more individuals came in and brought in, I guess that was a motorhome, and also another camper. And they were setting up like, looked like some kind of an operation, is very frustrating. So here we have in one day, five come in, so I kind of freaked out more than most times. Well, I'm, I live right there, so I can watch these people, and it's odd, they park these campers there, and they're dilapidated campers or whatever. And they come in only at night. I mean, I've never understood, they'll come in when it's dark. And they'll take their little bikes or something, they park the bikes by the place, and then they go into their camper, and then a few, little while later, they come out. And this is going on all over there. A lot of, there's a few of them that camp, but most of these are sitting there, and they're almost like some kind of weird operation. I don't understand it or have it figured out, but it looks really bad, and it's scary. And so like he said, these, these areas are dark there. And I've lived in East Missoula 53 years. I've never been afraid to go anywhere in East Missoula. When we were kids, we, we trick or treated every single house, you know, in the whole area. And even now, I wouldn't be nervous to knock on any of my neighbor's house and talk to any of them in this neighborhood, except for maybe one that's also involved in this stuff, and they are a house there. But with these places, it makes you nervous. I find myself, we have a convenience store, Ole's, I find myself, I live a block away, right on that street, and I, when I walk down that street, which is rarely to go to Ole's anymore, because it's not the right street to go down, it's, it just makes you nervous. So when I walk there, I walk the opposite side of the street, because you don't know what's going to be behind or around those campers, or what kind of operations going on. And so if I feel that way, you know, there's no way my daughter, I would let her walk down my street in front of my house right now with these campers there. I think that's a huge issue, and something that we don't really talk about, you know, the campers and everything else is just a matter, if it's a nuisance, it's cleaning up, you know, the needles, yeah, that's horrible. We've got kids that are walking to the bus, we've got kids trying to go to Ole's buy a candy bar, and I just think something needs to be done, and I think this is a good chance to go in the proper direction, clean that up. So I guess that's, along with a law, I could go on forever, obviously, but this is a huge issue to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Additional comment? Ms. Bridges?
Hi, Lee Bridges here again. I just want to thank Ben and Cameron for both coming in support of this. This is an issue that's been going on with our council through the Hellgate Canyon Storage Facility for years. I have emails dating back to 2016, starting March 8th, March 9th, March 30th, and I can go on, and if you need any records, I can provide those. I think that with the hard work that you, Dave, have done, we really appreciate that. The solution of coming up with the overnight, the no overnight parking signs, I think will work, because that will give the Sheriff's Department the authority to enforce those signs, and that's what we need. The, the folks that have been taking up residence have parked there and remain there for months at a time. I have a letter that I sent to you all on October 8th. Do you all still have that copy? Okay, good. And I presented it to the community council. Four of us present, there was, there was four of us present, our fifth member was out sick, but three of us signed it. The fourth member hesitated to support it only because she's worried that this will be passed on, when they move, they'll move somewhere else. Well, indeed they will, but I don't believe they'll be moving into our neighborhoods in our community, because this is something that is on the more nefarious side, and I don't believe when they have to be parked on a, on a residential street, when they have residents living 360 around them, they can't get away with what they're getting away with now. So I don't believe that's going to be a problem. This is a solution that we came up with to, it's, it's a trial run, and I believe it's going to be very successful, and that it will solve our problem. So I just want to thank all of you for helping us to carry this out. I also have a, a copy that I want to submit, if I can separate these pages. This is another neighbor who lives in our community, who is also complaining about the campers. I was able to copy off our messages. He gave me permission, and the permission is in here, allowing me to do this and present this to you. So this is from Kevin Frazier out in East Missoula. So I'd like to turn this in.
And Lee, how, how long is it? I wonder, is it something you could just read to us, since, since we've not seen it previously?
Sure.
Good evening. I wanted to express my concern about the travel trailers and transient people who live in them. We need to do something about them, remove, and remove them from our community. My response back was, hi Kevin, the transients you are concerned about are located where in East Missoula specifically? It would be nice to have an alternative to provide for them, to provide them with incentive to leave on their own accord. Surely other communities have faced the same situation, and perhaps there are already solutions in place that can be implemented. Have you reached out to the Pavarello Center yet to ask for suggestions/ referrals? His answer back was, they are behind the storage units in East Missoula, and unfortunately, that's their problem, not ours. They can't just mooch off our community. When and where is the next meeting I would like to join? So my response back was, funny, I was just there talking to Kristy at Hellgate Canyon Storage about that. We may have come up with a solution. I encourage you to come to our next meeting. No, no joining required, just attend. We meet on the second Tuesday of the month in East Missoula Community Center at blah, 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 blah. Our next meeting is blah, blah, blah. And I was, I, it's more about encouraging to attend the meeting. So his response back was, thank you, I appreciate it, I love East Missoula, and I would like to make it a nice, I would, I want to keep it, I want to keep it, I want to keep making it nice and cleaning it up. Again, thank you. So then my response, this, and that was all taken, this messaging was done April 29th of this last spring. So earlier this week, I wrote to Kevin and said, Kevin, sorry it's taken so long for anything to get done about this problem, the wheels of justice turn slowly, but I believe we have a remedy that we're going to try. We have a meeting with the commissioners on Thursday for a resolution to post no overnight camping signs, which we're hoping will dissuade campers in the future, but more importantly, it will give the Sheriff's Department the authority to enforce it. I'm reaching out to you to see if you'll write me up a statement in support of this resolution and/or grant me permission at least to copy this messaging between us and submit it to the meeting. Thank you for your concern on this matter, and I look forward to hearing from you, Lee Bridges. And he wrote me back and said, yes, you can copy these conversations, thank you for taking care of this, you guys do great work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lee.
So I'll just turn this in?
Yeah, just give it to Emmy right here. Cameron?
So I'm going to, I just want to say, I'm, I wanted to give that to you to show that we have wide, broad-based support, and I hope, and I know that you'll do the right thing. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you. Just real quick, I know these things are, there's a technical nature to them as well. If this is advanced and approved, can it be defined where there's no overnight parking from like Clyde? So it's, you know, from the intersection of Clyde, Michigan? So it's not just the red part of the storage, there's a little bit of our parking area there as well? Does that make sense?
So let's look at the language of the resolution, so... Okay, be it resolved, parking adjacent to Summers Street. So, help me out here, Vicky or staff?
I can help.
I can point it out to you very quickly.
Go ahead, Lee.
I want to say, and I wanted...
It looks like from the exhibit that it, it does indeed extend along all the way to Clyde.
Beautiful, and then Michigan.
And for Michigan, also all the way to Highway 200, if I'm reading.
The actual exhibit for the resolution.
Come on up, if you want to see the exhibit. It's, it's a little different than...
It goes all the way.
We're going to make sure no one's going to be parking right here.
Correct, that, that area is included.
Yeah, the exhibit that will be attached to the resolution carries it all the way to Clyde. This is just our property management system, and for some reason, that's red there.
Because the, I believe the roof is red, that's why, so, yeah.
Well, I also, I wanted to point out, just because I'm a stickler for such things, it says the southwestern side of Summers Street, when actually that's the north, that's the north side of Summers Street, that's the north end of Summers.
I think we're thinking of which side of the street, so if you take the center line, you'd go southwest to hit the edge of the property boundary, so.
Okay, then I concede.
Okay.
And if you need a 100 block for Michigan Avenue, that is the 500 block of Michigan Avenue, I do believe.
Okay.
If you need to be that specific.
I, I think, I think we're good as far as the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
I was wondering if, Rob, if you had anything that you wanted to add?
Captain Taylor, would you like to come on up and add your two cents? Also, could you, since we know that your staff are limited countywide, and that much of law enforcement is complaint-driven, how best would members of the public, and I guess this would apply beyond just this situation, how best are they to report something, a violation of a resolution like this?
Yeah, so Captain Rob Taylor with the Sheriff's Office. You're exactly right, Dave. So complaint-driven response is the best idea. I, I would envision that as this thing goes into place, most of the folks, like the gentleman, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name, Mr. Olson, Olson, and, and the neighbors in that area would be most likely to see the violators and, and report to us. And then we would, as we do, unfortunately, have to sometimes prioritize those calls. So I just want to make sure that while we're committed to, to enforcing this and answering it, just understand that our business in general is, is somewhat reduced to that need to prioritize and sort of triage calls, so.
And that would begin with a 911 call.
A 911 call would be the best way. A lot of times, folks have this perception that they don't want to bother 911. I think about 23 years ago, when I started, that ship sailed. So please bother 911. The days of calling the office and, and the way that everything is tracked, it just really needs to go through 911, so. That's, that's the, the A answer is call 911 and say, I see a, a whatever, you know, Breaking Bad Winnebago parked here or there, and we'll, and we'll come out and take a look at it. And I apologize for not being here when the discussion started, I got a little bit tied up, but from our perspective, the only concern i- is the usual concern that it's written in such a way that the, both the county attorney's office and the judges that will see these tickets, that it's clearly enforceable, has super clear timelines, what does nighttime mean? Is that 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, which is typically what it means in the federal side?
It is, actually.
So, okay, good. And, and then the other question becomes like it does with a lot of our parking area problems, if no one's present, it's very difficult to issue a citation to anyone for violation of either a state law or a parking complaint. So we've gone round and round with, with parking complaints at McLean Bridge, as we know, and how that works. And typically, we're able to use our information system and our computer system through dispatch to determine a registered owner of the vehicle, and we usually will write an unattended vehicle a citation to that person. My concern is, is that about 50% of those end up being someone else driving the vehicle, and in cases like this, my experience tells me that these are not currently registered to the person who parked them there. So that may be a little difficult, and I wanted to ask also the provision for towing pursuant to this. Is it immediate? Is it a towable offense right of way? That really solves the problem.
Sure. John, do you have any thoughts on?
Yeah. From our perspective, and I think from an immediate effect perspective, if there's a way to do that, that works in the legal framework of, of a resolution like this, that would give us the best tool. If we can go there, wait 30 minutes for reds or spars or browns and make this thing go away, we have solved the problem. If we hang a ticket on it, it's going to blow into Mr. Olson's yard eventually if nobody wants to go get it, so.
So currently, the, the final be it resolved statement says that the Missoula County Sheriff is hereby requested to take such action as is required to assure compliance with the parking regulations in the affected right of way.
You'd like it to be a little clearer?
Yes, that would be great. Yes, that would be great. Yeah. Something, something a little more definite, um, that, uh, and in typi-, in typical fashion for parking complaints, for something to be a towaway zone, it has to be a significant, um, impediment to emergency response or to the flow of traffic under state law. And I don't know, this would be a question for, for John probably, I don't know what the ability to reach down in, in a resolution like this and, and make that available. Um, I don't know if, you know, if this condition represents a big enough hazard to the community. I mean, I think there's a case to be made there that, uh, leaving these vehicles with the history of what they've resulted in. So I don't know.
John, do you have some thoughts? Could we just insert state statute in there that would?
In one of the whereas clauses, about two-thirds of the way down, it does reference MCA 61-8-705 with, which authorizes the removal of illegally parked vehicles, um, in conjunction with the parking prohibitions and authorities in 61-8, 353 through 355.
Yeah, 354 is the typical one that we would use, parking, you know-
354?
Well, that's one of them, yeah. Yeah. Prohibited places.
353 to through 355, so that would-
Oh, good. So that's, yeah, prohibited places, on roadway and practical park off, and I don't remember the other one.
But nonetheless, we, we oughta, we oughta just take a, a look at it and make sure that before the, before we finalize the resolution, that it has the sufficient language.
Yeah. So I guess, you know, from more of a 30,000-foot view, from, from our perspective, um, we're, we're happy to help. Um, we think this is a, a worthwhile venture to see what the effect is and if it, and if it creates a, a positive change for that community. I know how frustrated they've been and how bad that looks, um, and, you know, for kids and, and for the residents there. And, uh, I also understand that it's part of a, a deeper community-wide issue. So, um, I hope we don't create a whack-a-mole situation. I think that was kind of mentioned too. Um, but that said, we're, we're anxious to give it a try. Um, our folks are, are certainly willing and able to enforce it. I just want to make sure that, um, the enforcement action that we're allowed under this creates a solution. Um, so that's where, that's where my concern is.
Okay, thank you. And can we, Vicky, go ahead.
So the reason we call this a proposed resolution is because we have to take public comment before you can adopt the resolution. So at this point, you wouldn't, um, approve the resolution. What we'll do is make the changes as Rob has requested and then we will put it on admin for next week for the final vote.
Okay, fantastic. That was my question, how procedurally we deal with it. Uh, thanks, Rob.
All right, thank you.
Then I just had a quick question. I know we've talked about this before. I thought we had, if, um, the Pavarello's, like homeless outreach team had gone out and met with the folks who've been parking there. I mean, has there been human contact made with them? Know their story and have they been directed to services or, or what's been done?
The short answer is, uh, uh, yes and no. They have been out there. Um, I think as alluded to by Mr. Olson, uh, knocking on the doors of some of these places is a little sketchy and, uh, and I think at least the folks who went out there, um, did not feel particularly comfortable. Uh, this is outside of what they normally do in terms of contacts with folks. However, I think that this, um, this resolution would give a mechanism whereby if, if someone has been parked overnight out there, it would give the sheriff's office certainly, um, uh, an opportunity to make that contact, uh, rather than just randomly knocking on the door of some place, uh, without a regulation like this in effect. Uh, Captain Taylor?
Yeah, so that's true. Um, if you, especially in the case where you make somebody's vehicle go away to a tow yard, and if they value it, we will find out who they are and have the opportunity to talk to them. If they don't value it, we've talked about this issue as well. Sometimes, um, unfortunately, sometimes especially with RVs, where they're very hard to make go away in the sense of a junk vehicle. And so, um, I just would, I guess, present that thought for the commission to consider that if, if folks just start hauling stuff in because they don't want to pay to get rid of it, and then we end up in that situation, um, there's that, so.
Okay, thank you. And, and hopefully if, uh, if this does provide a mechanism whereby, uh, the sheriff's office can make contact with these folks. Ultimately, the, the end goal is, 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 and this is a multi-pronged effort, the end goal is to figure out what the underlying problem here is. Is someone just down on their luck and this is their home and nowhere else to go? Are there other issues at play? And, uh, and how might we connect those folks with some of the social services, uh, that might ultimately solve the problem rather than just pushing it around to a different, different neighborhood? So what I guess we would like to, if, if you're in concurrence with this, Commissioner Verro, what we'd like to see by next week's admin, when we take formal action on this, would be any clarifying language in here that would, uh, give the sheriff's office what they need in terms of precise language for enforcement, uh, be that towing or ticketing. And also, um, I think it would be great if whatever signage we're developing out there, uh, could be explicit too, that one of the consequences would be towing. Uh, are we good with that?
Yep.
Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and, uh, and invite you all to our 10:00 AM admin meeting on Tuesday of next week, you think?
I would ask John if we think we, that we can get this accomplished by next Tuesday?
Or Wednesday?
I, I won't be there on Tuesday or Wednesday, but that doesn't mean we can't get it accomplished by Tuesday or Wednesday.
I'll get it in admin. Does either day work better for Lee or Cameron?
If you want to attend.
If it's at 10 o'clock on Tuesday, I will make myself present. If it's on Wednesday, I'll regurgitously do so as I'm missing here in public hearing, but I can be here for that as well.
I did first speak, Chris, yeah, I did first speak.
Okay. Well, uh, how about this? Unless you hear otherwise from us, assume that it will happen 10:00 AM next Tuesday during our administrative meeting, and that occurs in our administrative building across the street, second floor. Okay. Thank you all for turning out for that. I really appreciate the collaborative effort to figure out a problem in the community. Okay, moving on. The next public hearing, which I will open, is a phasing plan for Canyon East, an extension of that phasing plan or modification of that phasing plan. And we'll begin with a staff report by Jamie Urbacher.
Thank you, Dave. So as you just mentioned, this is the phasing plan extension and modification. Uh, Perry Ashby with Westmont Builders is the applicant, represented today by Paul Forsting at Territorial Land Works. Uh, Canyon East is a 141 residential lot subdivision that was originally, uh, approved in 2003. Um, phases one through seven have already been filed and that leaves phases eight through 10 to still be filed. Uh, the subdivision is located off of Expressway and Wheeler Drive, so, uh, out near the, um, Development Park. And if you're looking at this screen, the-
Can you, can you zoom out a little bit? I'm lost.
Yeah, let me, I should have included a big, bigger picture here for you.
Oh, I didn't realize that was a slide.
No, you're good.
Okay.
So the phases that have yet to be filed are right in that blue square there. Um, so Expressway is running right here.
Gotcha.
Development Park is out to the west. So I've, I've kind of rotated it, but yeah. And so with the subdivision, most of the infrastructure is in with the exception of the boulevards and the walkways. Uh, so all the road improvements are made. Um, and as the phasing plan is right now, you can see that phase eight is located in between phases nine and 10. So if it were to be developed first, you would get walkways that would be disconnected from the rest of the subdivision, which just doesn't really make sense. I'm not sure why it was originally approved this way, but it is what it is. Um, uh, so the first request is to modify this phasing plan and, um, to file phase eight at the intersection of Storehouse Way and Wheeler Drive. And that would allow for, uh, those improvements to more or less be connected with the rest of the subdivision, um, and, um, be in place in a, in a manner that makes more sense. Uh, Perry also has plans for a multifamily development proposed with phase eight. And so with filing this, that would allow him to build that out. The second part of this request is a phasing plan extension, and that would be to extend phases eight and phases nine until November 7th of 2022. And that is three years out from today's date, which is what our subdivision regulations, um, that's the maximum extension that we can give. So phase 10 is not proposed to be extended at this time. I know Perry was interested in extending beyond the three years. However, um, that's not something that we can do per subdivision regulations. Um, uh, both requests do comply with the, the regulations as presented. Uh, there will be a slight modificate, modification to the conditions of approval, and that will just be to, uh, adjust the phasing numbers within the conditions themselves. Uh, so we are recommending approval of this request, uh, subject to the conditions included in attachment B, which are again, just reflective of the renumbering of the phases.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to comment?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. Um, I just wanted to add that this project is unique in that, um, Perry was able to accomplish, uh, some of his goals, which were to, um, create high-quality housing and, and for it to be below the, the market rate. And I think it still holds, holds that, um, I guess, I don't know, title, designation or claim, I guess. Um, and so it, it's interesting in that, that, that that's, there's something to learn from this and Canyon Creek Village, which were built next, um, to each other, both by Perry, in that he was able to do that. That's something where in this time, day and age where we're looking for housing and different options, um, this, this is an area where, where that's, where housing was built and, and it's still available at a relatively reasonable rate. Um, it was when it was brand new and it still is. And so, um, you know, we can all speculate why that is. And, and I just think there are some things to benefit from that. Perry continue, wants to continue that, I guess, legacy and he, he just needs time to be careful. Building prices are expensive and so he's trying to pivot these last couple phases to make sure that he can be just as successful as he was on the other ones. And so, um, it's taken a long time to get here. I know there's a lot of debate if, how long phasing plans should be extended and what are the benefits of getting something done real quick and, and what are the benefits of things being phased out and, and developed slowly. And in this case at least, he's been able to be strategic in how he releases these, um, I guess, workforce housing for, I don't know if they're affordable, but they're, they're workforce housing units. And so, um, you know, there are, I just wanted to point that out here today when we were talking about something that isn't, I don't know if controversial is the right word, but there's, there's nothing controversial about it and it's just, um, just wanted to point it out. So nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. This is public hearing. Any public comment on the proposed phasing plan modification? Okay, uh, close the public hearing questions or motion.
Anything interesting in the original, or was this proposed or discussed?
Uh, no.
Men meeting?
Well, yeah, we got an update essentially was exactly what we just heard. So they just hit the rewind button out here.
Got it. Okay. Well then, I move to appro-, oh, I'm sorry. Am I jumping ahead?
You are absolutely not jumping ahead.
I, I moved to approve the Canyon East phasing plan modification and extension, subject to the conditions included in attachment B.
Okay, that is in order. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, finally, and I think this is what some folks in the audience were here for originally, but you got, uh, a bonus with all of these other agenda items. First, this is a non-action item today and it's an update on Missoula County's, um, uh, zoning audit report. And we'll begin with a staff report, um, by Jenny Dixon and I'll let you take it from there.
Can you just, uh, for a second?
Okay.
Good afternoon. Uh, for the record, my name is Jenny Dixon with Community and Planning Services and I am joined today by Allison Mauch, our consultant, uh, with Orion Planning and Design, Planning Plus Design, Planning and Design. Um, we have in the last few days been rolling out the final version of the audit report for the county zoning update that we've been working on for about the last six or seven months. We have briefed the commissioners and also at the, um, planning board meeting on Tuesday, rolled out the, kind of the core recommendations of this plan and, uh, generally how we would seek to accomplish those. What we want to do today so that we're not repetitive for the commissioners and providing additional information for the public is to go through some of the specific, uh, next steps that are recommended in the audit. And the timeframes, um, that you'll see in the audit report are immediate, ongoing, and long-term. Immediate, um, steps are the ones we're going to cover here for you today. So there is more information in the audit report that, uh, are tasks, and we can certainly answer questions about those today, um, tasks that we're going to be looking at as part of this project, but really envisioning them taking a bit longer than, um, tying it up, tying up loose ends by next summer. And so what I want to do now is just turn it over to, um, Allison. Uh, actually, first let me just, I'll go through the, uh, core recommendations, but then what I want to do is turn it over to Allison to talk about the specific next steps to accomplish some of these core recommendations. These are the six, um, big picture recommendations that came out of the audit report, uh, after talking with stakeholders internal and external, um, as well as, um, a steering committee and any other interested person who attended our open house.
Is your microphone doing weird things? Do you want this one?
It's, it's kind of like bouncing back at me a little bit maybe. Do you want to try this one?
We may need to do a budget amendment to upgrade our microphones here.
Let me try this one. Is that better?
That is better.
Okay. Uh, so the six core recommendations are, some of, some of them are going to seem very obvious, um, but the, the need of them is really in how they're implemented. And so the first one is aligning our zoning with our community values and that is, uh, a really, we're in a really good position to be able to do that, having just adopted the land
use element amendment to the growth policy in June. So we have a really good, strong foundation to know what our community values are based on that plan and, and, um, taking the next steps to implement it through the zoning. Correcting zoning misalignment between the city and the county. And we've been having these discussions with planning board members and city staff and the public about what does that mean? And it's not entirely clear yet what that means, but it does mean looking at, um, those, that interface area and looking at, does, does the zoning create obstacles to, uh, future expansion of the city? Does it create obstacles to development that is probably appropriate in that location if, if infrastructure is available? And how do we make sure that, um, the form and function of those areas are compatible and congruent? And so we're going to look at the zoning, um, to determine if it needs to change to match what's next to it in the city or something that is compatible. So incentivize density where appropriate and that goes along with those areas where there may be infrastructure available, but the zoning doesn't match it. Um, looking at clustering and yet also at the same time potentially offering some incentives through density bonus in the- through density bonus in the clustering development. Overhauling design standards to promote quality development, that's a big catch-all for all of the parking, landscaping, signage, fencing, any kind of design element of a site that really right now is lacking in our zoning. Updating our code organization and formatting is kind of more of an administrative thing, but it's going to hopefully make it easier to use hard copy and also then on the website interactive and being able to link easily from one section to the other. And then finally, look at creating a unified code, and that is more of an ongoing or long-term goal, but starting to look at how we want to unify our zoning and our subdivision regulations, and then ultimately looking at the possibility of bringing some other departments in on that, so that our regulations are all consistent and easy for the public to use and understand. And enhancing our enforcement tools is a final but very crucial piece of what we're doing here. If we're going to make these, take these steps to make their zoning work better, we want to make sure, just as in our last public hearing or two public hearings ago, about enforcement is really, it was really key, and being able to have that ability to make sure that what we do in this project matters. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Allison for her to go through some of the detailed next steps.
Just going to try out all the microphones. Perfect. I was just about to comment, there are so many TV screens and none of them are really helpfully located for this. So Jenny really set the stage for the core set of recommendations that our team put together for the county to consider and for you to consider as we move forward with the amendment process. For those of you who've read the report, there are many levels to those recommendations, and I'm going to focus on what we're going to tackle over the next eight months, hopefully, with your approval. The first recommendation in terms of aligning the core community values, that really came out of significant conversations with stakeholders as a follow-up to the future land use mapping process. And we heard time and again how important that alignment is going to be in continuing that community buy-in with what's happened in terms of the planning and what now can happen in the implementation phase. So we kind of look at this as what is going to be necessary to kind of get your house in order. And on the ground level, we have to look at how the existing zoning districts align with that future land use map that was adopted back in June, and the changes that need to be made to those base districts, the incorporation of new districts such as the East Missoula live-work-make component that has been discussed at length quite a bit over the last two-plus years.
Can you guys in the back here, okay? Okay.
Do I need to speak up?
You pull the mic just a little closer.
Okay. Sorry. I'm worried that I'm making weird, also weird sounds. So kind of three components of that alignment are really taking the districts we have, evaluating what needs to change within them, kind of reframing, reformatting the districts themselves. They're going to look a lot different. And I'll get into that in terms of the organization and restructuring here in just a second. But really, the takeaways are right out of the gate. We're going to be looking at some additional zoning districts through the amendment process, and then revising some of the special districts in Chapter 5 especially that are single-use and that are no longer really best practice in terms of zoning and how to really incorporate the components that are still useful for the county into a core set of base districts that really align with the land use designations that the county has adopted. I've got multiple screens here. So as Jenny mentioned, one of, the next recommendation really focuses on that alignment along the city and county transition area, where the city boundary ends and the county begins, and kind of what's happening in that area, because as we know, that's a pretty dynamic space and will continue to be as the city grows and the county's urbanizing area grows as well. So the three strategies or the approach that we're hoping to take in the next eight months is to identify as we develop those base districts, identify where there are going to need to be map amendments pretty soon in the process, to align the county's goals with the adjacent city districts. And I would note that in conversations over the last five or six months, while we'll be looking from the county perspective in alignment with the city, it's important to realize that, you know, the county is really kind of leading this effort. The city zoning regulations haven't been comprehensively updated for 12, 13 years. And so there's a real opportunity to have a conversation through this process to say, maybe there's some changes that need to be made on the city side of things to come into alignment with what the future land use map, the land use designations, and the zone change in the county are going to kind of set forth. So it's not, it'll be kind of a collaborative conversation, I think, as we move forward. As part of that, you know, there's what's happening on the ground today, there's also what's happening on the ground three to five years, five to 10 years down the road in terms of the city's annexation plans and infrastructure growth in that transitional area. And so the second stage will be to look at what can we facilitate now and what changes need to happen in the near term, but maybe not the immediate future, for the districts, the zones to change and kind of morph along that transitional line. And that's based a lot on the city's priorities for annexation, and again, will be an ongoing conversation as we move forward with this recommendation. And as Jenny mentioned, I think it's still, I mean, we can't stick our thumb on exactly what's going to come out of that, but it's a pretty critical part of this process. And then to tie it all together is really looking at, through the base districts, through potential overlays and incentives, how we can align the design standards that would apply to the county zoning, better align with what, if an area will annex in the near term, we want to create every opportunity for the character of that area to blend with the city's standards and the character of that neighborhood or that zone moving forward, so that we're not creating kind of conflicting characters as a result of any zoning map amendments over the short and long term. So that one's probably the, I would say, squishiest recommendation we have, but it's probably the most important. So as Jenny mentioned and kind of tied to that second recommendation, the third is looking at ways to incentivize the density that we've heard time and again is critically important, especially as we're talking about housing and promoting more opportunities along that front. One of the ways that we'd like to do that, and one of our directives at the beginning of this process and that will permeate the amendments moving forward, is looking at how to kind of rethink and streamline the administrative processes in the code. And one of the ways that we're hoping we can facilitate added density or incentivize density in areas where it's most appropriate now is to look at developing a streamlined permitting process, not only for the development permits, but also applicants, landowners that want to rezone proactively as a result of the land use mapping process, and as a result of maybe having zoning districts that better reflect the character of the areas of their neighborhoods that aren't the typical or traditional districts that the county has now. And so looking at how we might kind of pave the way for that to happen kind of organically as opposed to the county maybe taking the first step on some of those rezonings would be a process that's pretty beneficial, would obviously go hand-in-hand with maybe some of the rezoning priorities that the county has. Jenny also mentioned the focus on cluster development, density bonus. We've talked a lot about that throughout this process and the fact that the cluster development provisions in the zoning right now aren't used all that frequently or successfully. One of the things we'll look at over the next couple of months is how to reestablish the relationship between the cluster development standards and the density bonus standards, and look at opportunities to not only more clearly marry the two, but also offer the opportunity for there to be density bonus outside of cluster development standards. They're not mutually exclusive, but they're also not, as we were talking about the other day, something where you must cluster in order to gain a density bonus. There's ways to use both tools together and independently. And so I think reframing how those are presented in the zoning and where they might be used, especially in terms of where cluster development might be both a requirement in some districts and an incentive in other districts, and then using the density bonus to get towards that incentivization will be part of what we are looking at over the course of the next few months. So the fourth recommendation, as was mentioned, is a long one, and it has a lot of moving parts, because there are both site design and development design standards within the current zoning regulations, and they're kind of in various states of, states of best practice, we shall say. So the very first step is actually going to be to comb through the regulations, through the existing site design and development design standards, and unify them all in one place. And when I say "all in one place," I actually mean two places, because there's going to be, with the overhaul of the districts and the way that the districts will look different, we're looking at developing building typologies, lot typologies, and using, you know, graphics and illustrations to really convey the site design standards that would apply by district. Then you have use design standards, environmental standards, kind of the broader design standards that would apply universally across districts, and those would all likely be housed in one chapter, in one location, and then cross-referenced through that interactive code Jenny may mention of, and that I'll get to here shortly. So first step is to kind of find them all, because they're throughout the regs, bring them all together in an organized fashion. Again, look at some of those special district design standards that are probably better incorporated into the base districts and in one location. The landscaping and parking standards in particular are minimal at best. And so we would really be looking to expand upon those, expand upon them based on not only site design, but streetscape, and kind of focus on a more comprehensive suite of standards where those apply. Something we heard pretty frequently and was actually driven home the other night at the planning board, when there was another development review proposal prior to our presentation, was the need to maybe more effectively integrate some of the parks and recreation requirements into the zoning districts. And this speaks to a broader focus that we'll have, is looking at other regulations, specifically the subdivision regulations, and identifying where the zoning code can compare better with the requirements in things like subdivision. So there's more guidance provided through the zoning regulations with the very long-term objective, as Jenny mentioned, to unify the code with something like the subdivision regulations and possibly regulatory documents in other departments, but really create the zoning as the mechanism by which development is, the design of development is regulated. And so the need to look at not only facility design and access, but also where we're incentivizing or promoting additional residential density, and the need for parks and recreation and open space to serve that additional density, having there be more of a meaningful conversation through the zoning regulations in terms of where these types of amenities occur in the county will be important as part of this next step. As I mentioned, the building and lot typologies and illustrative design standards. Another thing that we'll focus on that's more administrative is kind of tailoring the variance process, so that it's clear, consistent, and determines where and what design criteria might be appropriate for a variance, whether some of those variance requests could be handled administratively as opposed to going through a lengthier process. And there are ways that we can kind of categorize and layer that, so it's pretty clear to an applicant if and when a variance is appropriate and may be requested, and then the direction that goes, the process that that follows. Probably the biggest bucket in the overhaul of the design standards, and again, one of the most important, is looking at the environmental design and the standards that would apply throughout the zoning, the project area, the zoning districts in terms of environmental hazards, areas that require protection, areas that we want to prioritize for continued open space or agricultural preservation. This is one of those recommendations that we see as beginning now, the steps to kind of fleshing out what the environmental suite looks like and how it applies to the base districts. But in terms of its importance in the next eight months, we want to be very realistic in what can be accomplished. So over the hazards, this is like floodplain, fire, sorry, thank you.
Floodplain, fire.
Yes. And I, and just areas that I would take it also to, in terms of sensitive natural areas, to be wildlife corridors, soils of agricultural importance. So the first step is identifying these areas and really pinpointing, I mean, we have a lot of them, obviously the wooie has been identified, we have a lot of the wildlife corridors generally identified. Floodplain's pretty clear, but there's nuance in terms of, is that all off limits? Is some of it off limits? I mean, obviously, we don't allow building in the floodway, but what about 500-year floodplain? How do we want to kind of treat these things in terms of our zoning? And especially in terms of floodplain, having there be more of a connection between the regulations that apply in those areas and the development that can occur when you have a property that's in a specific zone that's also affected by the floodplain regulations. And so right now, they're pretty separate, and this is a way that we can hopefully unify the development standards that would apply to those areas. The wooie especially is so important, and it's also something that will require a lot of specialized focus, because a lot of the wild and urban interface standards that can, you know, that we would want to consider, we have to balance the legality of what can be handled through building code and what is appropriately handled through zoning, and some of the case law and precedent that's come out in the last couple of years that kind of guide where and how we deal with that through this set of regulations. And so the conversation will absolutely start as part of this process, but because, you know, what we're basically saying is-
you know, what we're basically saying is there might be restrictions to what happens in the areas that we identify and the areas we prioritize for hazard protection. I think it will be really crucial that there's a pretty open and expansive public process that goes along with those conversations. So we just wanted to be realistic in terms of what we can accomplish between now and July, or, you know, just being honest, so. And then as we move from the design standards, this recommendation, this bucket is really pretty broad, and Jenny hit upon it. Well, in terms of just the general reorganization of the code, we're working on a sample table of contents, given the existing regulations, some of the concepts that staff have worked on, and then how we would kind of prioritize the reshuffling of both the districts and the design standards and the administrative processes. But generally speaking, just this is a, you know, there's some general cleanup that needs to happen and that can happen and should happen as part of this amendment process that will allow us to get a little bit more streamlined, organize the definitions a little bit better, the reorganization of the districts to be more focused. And finally, again, this recommendation is one that would start now, and there are some kind of interim immediate goals such as developing an amended code that is interactive in PDF format, that is easily searchable, that can kind of do those cross-references online so that if you're working within a residential zoning district and you need to know what landscape standards would apply, it's a click, it's not a scroll, and it takes you to the place that you need to go, and then you can get back to the place you were. So just some general functionality improvements we can make as part of this initial set of amendments. The enforcement process, which currently is, I think, half a page at most in the regulations, we've heard and agree needs to be improved upon, needs to be expanded upon, and part of that conversation will be capacity-related in terms of the current staffing levels and what can be accomplished and how we create a code that is going to be enforceable because we can do all of this. And then if we don't have the ability to see it through to the other side when there's an issue that comes up or where there's opportunity for us to be proactive, then we're kind of just, we're selling ourselves short or setting ourselves up for failure. So that's going to be a really important part of the immediate amendment process, is identifying how we want to be proactive on the front end through permitting, and then also setting up a process for how we can be more consistent on the back end in terms of complaint-based or other types of enforcement reporting and how that's handled and how it's rectified or resolved.
Jenny Dixon again here. This set of recommendations is kind of the meat of the audit report, which, for those watching this, can find the report, full report at mczoningupdate.com. The rollout this week of the audit report really marks a turning point in this project from looking at where our strengths are in our current regulations, where we could make some improvements, to we're turning now toward making some, writing some amendments and starting to work with our steering committee in the next few weeks on some specific proposals. And we'll have plenty of opportunity throughout the next seven, eight months for public involvement and contributions to that process. The website that I mentioned also has links to appendices. Some of them may not all be there yet, but they will be, are they all there now? Okay. There are, I think there are nine appendices. They should either all be there or by the end of this week or Monday, they will all be up there. I think the one that's pending right now is the build-out analysis. We, since you last saw, we've redrafted it so that you might want to take a look at that again. And I think with that, I want to just make sure that the public is aware of this, of the direction that we're heading, and take any comment or questions from the board.
Great. Thanks, Allison and Jenny. And just lest there be any confusion, even though there's a picture of Karis Park on the screen, our regulations will not impinge on the city of Missoula, so we respect their autonomy. Any public comment of the folks who stuck with us for the past hour and a half on the audit report? Mr. Caldwell? Nothing? You have nothing for us?
I hope that came for us.
Okay.
I know it's a new.
No, this is great. I think this is a good piece of work and look forward to the next steps. Juanita, anything?
Just echoing the same.
Juanita says she's echoing the same. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything else that needs to come before the commission this afternoon? Okay, seeing none, we will be adjourned. Thank you, everyone.